Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cincinnati School Board. And we will begin with, if we can, the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Daniel, I know that. I know. I stand. It was my head last year.
Did you see me stand up and go, "Oh, that's my face"?
Very much.
In the camera, when I stood up, my face was right there.
And now, we will move on and have our roll call.
Mrs. Bates.
Here.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Present.
Mrs. Hoffman. Mr. Coons. Mr. Minera.
Here.
Mr. Nelms.
Here.
President Bolton.
Here.
Thank you. Now, we will entertain a motion for approval of our minutes, which requires a voice vote. And the... Thank you. Thank you. Special public meeting, April 9th, 2014, and special meeting, 2014, April 11th. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And any opposed? That sounds good to me. And we have committee reports also tonight that we need to work through. And I know that we want to start with our partnership and public engagement report. And I think Mrs. Dansby is going to take care of that in lieu of Chairman Coons.
Sure, thank you. The public... I'm sorry. The Partnership and Public Engagement Committee met on April the 23rd, and quite a very busy agenda that day. The committee covered what is called Career and Youth Development. That is an initiative being sponsored by the City of Cincinnati and the Urban League of Greater Cincinnati. And the district is reaching out to be the best partner that it could be as far as training our kids and teaching them how to do employment applications, so on and so forth. There was an update from the FASC committee, and they are having their next meeting in May. The Community Conversations update, as you probably know, there were... There was one meeting that we had at Robert's School, and so there will be several others. The next topic will deal with dual enrollment in advanced placement classes, and that will take place in the month of August. One very important update deals with the budget survey timeline. Parents are being asked to fill out surveys. It's going live May 1st, and it gets parents and communities' input related to the budget. And so, very busy committee, and those are a couple of the highlights.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mrs. Copeland-Dansby? Great. Do we have a report regarding the Audit Committee, which was in April, I believe, April 16th?
Yes, we do, and I...
You have your mic?
Yes, and I present this committee report as written.
Thank you. And now, also, from the Committee of the Whole, from April. Does any board member have any kind of question or review regarding the Committee of the Whole? All right. That's pretty good. We'll take that anytime. So, we have, at that point in time, after we've had the presentations, we need a voice vote to accept the committee reports as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And back, if we could, the Treasurers reminded me that I should have done a roll call vote for the minutes and not the voice vote. Anxious to get on with our business and what have you, so I would like, if possible, we would have the Treasurer do a roll call for approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Bates.
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman. Mr. Coons. Mr. Minera.
Aye.
Mr. Nelms.
Aye.
President Bolton.
Aye, thank you. And tonight, as some of you know, the last couple of cycles of board meetings, we have started to move the presentations behind the public... Hearing of the public, I guess, is the way to say it. But tonight, one of the rules we want to do and be aware of is tonight's presentations, one of them particularly does involve students. So, we will go back to the traditional way of doing it. And we have a couple of presentations tonight. And one of the presentations that we have this evening is really one that has been brought to our attention by two of our board members, who were fortunate enough to attend a very special event at Schroder High School. And that is, they recommended that we spotlight something that happened at Schroder, and particularly spotlight the folks that were honored and brought forward. And so, tonight, the spotlight is on our MORE program. It will be presented by William Johnson, MORE Coordinator, and the student members of the MORE Club at Schroder High School. So, if they will come forward for the presentation, we would really appreciate it and look forward to it. And I have to tell you, I think that the two board members, I think maybe there was 15 minutes between their experience at Schroder to where they were suggesting that you all bring this forward. So, as we see their email, it was certainly within 24 hours and even closer than that. And we welcome you to the podium, Mr. Johnson.
How's everyone doing this evening?
Hey.
Hey, good evening.
Okay, what I'm here to do is just highlight our MORE program. And MORE is an acronym for Men Organized, Respected, and Educated. It's in 14 CPS schools, eight elementary, six high schools. Okay, this is the vision, is to improve the lives of our young men through academic achievement, social and community responsibility, and create the values that teach responsibility, respect, and encourage self-growth. These is what we want our young men to become after being a part of the MORE program. Once they have cycled through, they should learn all of these core values that will essentially make them a... Will allow them to be a great young man, to produce for our society. Excuse me. The mission, the mission is to create upstanding, responsible, high-academic achieving young men who possess outstanding social skills with the expectations of being successful. MORE strives to save the lives and expand the minds of our young men, both mentally and socially. These are our pillars that our men of MORE, our young men of MORE, live by. We like for them to recite it at the beginning of the meetings and at the end of the meetings. And once they recite this, they will start to understand and believe and establish the values that will essentially make them, like I said previously, an upstanding young man. And so, we like for them to repeat that. I am educated. I am articulate. I am respectful. I am organized. I am engaged. I am ambitious. I am responsible. And I am the future. And all that means is that they are MORE, men organized, respectful, and educated. These are a few of our program goals. As you see, we have a lot of goals that we want our young men to strive to accomplish. And one of the main ones is that we want them to increase academic performance and test scores on the Ohio Achievement Assessment, in helping to close the achievement gap. And that is by improving their math, their science, and their public speaking. We also want them to improve their reading by one grade level. And another thing that we want them to understand is that the social-emotional aspect, handling their responsibilities, being able to handle conflict, and making the proper decisions, those are some key elements that will help them and essentially make them a full young man that's producing for our society. Also, we want to not only get them into college, we want them to also graduate from college. We want them to go through college. It's one thing for our young men to attend college, but it's important that they get through college, that they graduate with degrees, and become our future leaders. So, that is what we're striving for, our young men. These are our MORE Initiative core components, and its three main components. Of course, it's academic. We're very strong, and we're on top of our young men to make sure that they're achieving high academically. Also, life skill development, back to the social-emotional piece, college and career readiness, social skills, health and wellness, economic awareness, and citizenship responsibilities. Also, we want our young men to give back, making sure that they have to complete four community service projects a year, and they have to give presentation on those. So, those are our core components. The MORE impact, this was from a young man who graduated from Schroder High School last year, class of 2013. His name is Robert Cummings. And Robert was very great in the classroom, but he lacked the confidence. So, not only are we trying to change our young men who are not at risk but at promise, we're also trying to establish some confidence inside of our young men, making sure that they're able to talk confidently, be proud of achieving high in the classroom, in front of their friends, and just making sure that they're well-rounded, and they can survive socially as well as academically. This is the MORE Initiative club-level components and its club leadership. Each MORE club has a president, vice president, a secretary, and a sergeant of arms. These young men have to run for these positions. They are voted on by the rest of the MORE members, and these are certain positions that they take extremely seriously. Another MORE Initiative club-level component is Code of Conduct. The MORE program has its own general code of conduct, but our young men love to create additions to the code of conduct for their particular school, to add on to their school's school culture. So, I think it's something that the young men get behind, and it's a way for them, it's a check and balance system for them to make sure that the MORE members are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And our dress-up day, what we like to do with the MORE program is have our young men dress up every Monday. And Monday is the start of the week. And usually, it's Monday is the day that people, you know, dread coming to work and coming to school. But we feel that we have our young men dress up every Monday, they're starting the week fresh, they're starting the week new. And when they wear their shirts and ties, it exhibits confidence. It exhibits self-growth. It exhibits something that will have them serious about their education throughout the week. So, we like to establish that right off on Mondays or the beginning of the week. But the real reason why we're here tonight is that we want to spend a couple minutes talking with a young man from Schroder. His name is Demontre Lewis. He's currently number one in his 11th-grade class. So, let him get more honor to clap. And the White House Representative, David Johnson, was at Schroder High School a couple of weeks ago, and he had a great conversation with the young man. So, what we want to do is have a young man that's a part of the MORE program come and talk about the MORE program, because I can talk for days on how great the program is. But I think it's better for, not only for myself, but for everyone to hear about it from a MORE man. So, Demontre Lewis.
Thank you.
So, unlike him, I'm a little more brief and a little short. He can talk for days, but you know, it's hard for me to kind of elaborate for hours. So, basically, unlike you, I told you, I am number one in my class. So, the MORE hasn't really kind of benefited me in that area, because I pretty much am very strong in that area. But towards character-wise, the MORE program has done a lot for me. Before I entered the ninth grade, pretty much junior high, when the MORE wasn't around, I pretty much became a less humble kid, unlike when my dad had taught me to grow up to be as humble as possible. I pretty much became cocky in academics, cocky in athletics, cocky, and to the point I began challenging teachers, even though that's okay, but not in a respectful manner. But basically, for the MORE... And then, with my uncle serving as like a shadow watching out over me, I pretty much went back to my old ways, became a more humble kid myself. And this is different from everyone. The MORE's impact on everyone is pretty much different for each individual student. But mine was more towards character. I became more social, because I was kind of into my academics and nothing else. It was strictly academics and athletics. I pretty much set friends aside during school, and then, yeah, we can talk afterwards. But like during school days and after school, I'm pretty much school and practice. But sometimes, you may want to jump into a little conversation when it's allowed, you know? So, sometimes, now, more so, I may get carried away, may talk too much, but you know, remember my MORE virus, tell me what time to shut up, you know? Sometimes, talking too much is a bad thing. But that's kind of pretty much it for me. The MORE pretty much changed my aspects, my way, I view things and life, the importance of prioritizing things put in school first, but then having a nice social aspect, and that kind of creates a more well-rounded student as of myself. So, that's pretty much about it, unless you guys have any questions.
Well, thank you very much. I know we do have questions, and I know I would like to start with Vice President Nelms, because of all the board members, I think Mr. Nelms has been one of the guiding lights, if you will, regarding the MORE program and its expansion. And I know that he wants the director to come back. And after we do that, I think we'll also, after Mr. Nelms speaks, we want to be sure to ask the board members that attended that special event at Schroder to speak and get their reflections on it. So, Vice President Nelms, guiding light of MORE?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. And Mr. Lofton, I want to publicly say, Dr. Lofton, I want to publicly say, thank you for continuing to have the vision, because when we lost this palette about three to four years ago, it was pretty much in an embryonic state. We didn't know where it would lead. But as we see it evolve, and the fact that when you had to locate and assign new leadership, I want to say, Mr. Johnson, you're the right fit.
Thank you.
You really are. I say that, I don't get too much caught up in the data. I always look at the behavior, and I always look at the attitude. And I want to say, I've watched you, not only are you a shining example for these young men, but you're everywhere in the community. You're visible. You're engaged, you're involved, and you are a real-life role model for our boys. One of the things I wanted you to consider is continuing to have a vision beyond what the vision is, and continue to support him, Dr. Lofton, and I know you will. And young man, as you continue to get equipped, as you move forward, be prepared to come back and maybe take over for what he's doing, please, if that time comes. So, I just want to just say thank you, and I'm really, really proud of the works and endeavors that you guys continue to present and bring forth. And thank you for representing this district and changing and shifting the paradigm and the image of what most black males are subjected to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelms.
Thank you.
Now, a board member, Mrs. Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was able to be at the event that's up on the screen right now, and like President Bolton said, came back and emailed the board, and Mr. Johnson said what Mr. Johnson is doing is no less than changing lives. And that's not an exaggeration or hyperbole, that is true. When you hear his young men talk, they talk about how they were on a different path. And then, one of the young men said, "Mr. Johnson literally took me by the neck and dragged me into the MORE meeting, and his life is very different right now." And so, we know that we have, you know, folks in CPS who every day go into our buildings and change kids' lives. And so, I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Johnson for the work he is doing. And I think, you know, we hear Vice President Nelms say all the time, "Our kids are not at risk, our kids are at promise." And I think we believe that, and we need our kids to believe that. And the more we have folks like Mr. Johnson telling them that, I think the easier it is for them to believe it. And so, this program, yeah, listening to these boys talk, I had to stop myself from crying on a number of occasions. And even just the careers that they want to do, what was... Do you remember the one young man who was sitting towards the right? It was some sort of...
It was something in science, something physics.
Science, engineering, astrophysicist, was that it?
Yeah, it was an astrophysicist, yes.
Yes, I mean, those young men, their goals are, yes, and they will all get there. And it is exciting, exciting stuff. So, we just wanted to thank you publicly for the work you're doing, and acknowledge our young men, because Mr. Johnson can do all he wants to do, but without you all being engaged and understanding the promise you have, it wouldn't work. So, thanking all the young men as well for the work they're putting in.
Now, Member Copeland-Dansby?
Yeah, good, thank you all for being here tonight. You all know that I think that the MORE program is absolutely outstanding, with so much negativity in the media and other places related to African-American young men. This is a shining example of young men who have their heads on right, doing the right thing. So, this young man standing here, Mr. Demontre Lewis, I met probably two years ago in another endeavor, where he was probably one of, I don't know, seven or eight students who took a trip with me to Columbus, to the State House, where we were lobbying for some funding for a particular nonprofit. And he and I sat next to each other on the bus, and I didn't know he was in the MORE program, but what I did know was that he was just outstanding. His demeanor was outstanding, his whole image, the things that he talked about. He talked a lot about his academics. He talked a lot about his football, and that's how we connect it, right? So, just, I mean, without me even knowing that this young man was a part of the program, just an absolute shining star. So, you all look at this young man, turn around. Absolutely going to go far in life. And I know he has a supportive family, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, Dr. Lofton, for the great work that you're doing. Keep up the good work, son. We'll see you at graduation, right?
No.
All right.
Member Minera?
Well, there's so many things about the program I would love to highlight, but I know we're pressed with time. But as you can see, I'm wearing my MORE shirt, because I've just been excited from hearing from Dr. Lofton and Mr. Nelms about the program. I do want to highlight and encourage you on something, something I really like about the program that just captured me from the beginning when I first heard it, is the ability to have this young man go back and tutor and mentor the lower grades. I think it's great to think about when they're adults, but I think one of the things that our boys of color really need are immediate role models, and they don't need to be 30 years old. They could be you. They could be you to a kindergartner. So, if we can encourage this program to continue to build on that, you know, instill that spirit of mentoring, you know? I was told, you know, something I believe so much in my life is you need to have your teachers, your encouragers, but you also need to have your disciples. And those are the people you go and you pour into, because that's really how you learn once you're able to pour into them. So, continue the great work, and God my support.
I want to add, and I think this is from Daniel's perspective, our school system is becoming more and more broad in terms of ethnicity. There's a Hispanic population that we need to identify, boys of color. There's also some UOCitric boys that make up a minority in the district. So, if they have a desire to join MORE, do you accommodate them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for our guests?
Is there an organization for young women that is available?
Yeah, that's called...
And if not, maybe there's opportunity for that, because this is such a great endeavor. I think that that would be a great way to start the enthusiasm and the, you know, the positive peer interaction and the mentoring from that aspect as well. So, is there opportunity for that?
Well, actually, just this week, I was at a Zonta Club ladies' meeting. Apparently, they're one of the oldest organizations in the country, formed because women were banned from joining Rotary. And they... So, the women had their own club. So, they are interested in starting a Zonta Club at Withrow.
That's nice.
And Dr. Moffett there is going to do that.
There are some women and young girls' clubs. There's one at Porter Hayes. There's several across the district.
That's the Girls on the Run. We also, yes, we also have Girls on the Run.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Well, I want to say thank you to the board and as well as Ms. Ronan. Thank you.
Our next presentation will be an overview and an update on activities beyond the classroom. I'd like to introduce Lisa Thall, who will be and is and has been a great leader, but more particularly is president of the Board of Trustees for ABC. And she'll be introducing and starting this presentation from ABC. Lisa, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Impressive, the MORE program. Congratulations. That's outstanding. But first, I wanted to say, talk about the definition of success. And can you hear me okay? Because I like to bob and weave, and that's not going to be good. So, I'll try and stay close to the mic. But the definition of success is the favorable outcome of something attempted. Again, the success definition is the favorable outcome of something attempted. And thank you for always... Am I okay there? Thank you for always attempting something different when it comes to our children in the community and... Hello? And those that attend CPS.
Hold on, I think you might be too close to the mic.
Think I might be too close? Is that better?
And then, and make sure it's up just a little bit for you.
Okay.
Up, up, up.
Up, up, up?
Yeah, maybe that close. There you go. Yeah, maybe that close, there you go.
How we doing there?
I'm not sure, but let's give it a try.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, that's good.
So, sorry about the static, so I apologize about that. But thank you to Mary Ronan and all the board members for allowing us to share the outcome and vision that we've continued to do together with the ABC Foundation. We very much appreciate it, because we've done a lot of good work, and we could not have done that without your partnership. Thank you to the Cincinnati Public School District and each and every one of you for inviting us here tonight. And now I'd like to introduce Brian Lechner, who is going to show you in great detail the outcomes that we together have created. And the proof is right in what he's going to share. So thank you so much from behalf of all the board of directors of the ABC Foundation, and thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't been here in a while, so we'll see how this works. Last time I had other kinds of glasses. What is Activities Beyond the Classroom? We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose sole mission is to provide the necessary support for every Cincinnati public school student to engage in extracurricular activities throughout the year. This allows students the opportunity to build leadership, teamwork, responsibility, and self-discipline that helps them succeed in life. We were founded in 2004, we became operational in June of that year. Back then, we were known as the Student Activity Foundation. Our first president was Kent Cashel, who's known to some of you, and our spiritual leader was Dr. John Bryan, who I believe is known to all of you. We then replaced two good men with one good woman, our current president, Lisa. I work for her, you know?
Good thinking.
We were founded because state law caps the district's extracurricular budget at 1%. And even though CPS does a great job of funding, if you take that 1% and you run it through all 7th through 12th graders, forget about the K through 6, just run it through 7th through 12th graders, it comes out to about $200 per student in the district. Every time you put a boy on the football team, it's $600. That's one season, one boy. That means there's nothing winter or spring for that boy, and there's two other students, there's nothing at all. And there's nothing CPS can do about that, there's nothing anybody can do about it, it's just the way it is. So, an independent foundation was, was founded to help solve this problem. In 2005, in addition to fundraising, we entered our first partnership with CPS. We managed Stargill Stadium, home to five varsity football teams. It was a success, and we still successfully manage Stargill Stadium. Some of the fundraising highlights over the years have been $120,000 grant to send students to the Freedom Center, and two $200,000 Bengals NFL grants to upgrade fields at Withrow and Woodward. So it's just a, not too much detail, but just a little bit of an overview of what's been going on for a long time. In 2011, the Cincinnati Public School District and ABC entered into a partnership to manage extracurricular activities for the district. This partnership was designed to build on the strengths of CPS's infrastructure and ABC's flexibility. The athletic directors are what you all call the student activity coordinators, thank you. Is this better?
Yes.
All right. The athletic directors, or what you all call the student activity coordinators, now became extracurricular directors. They became employees of the foundation, and we managed their purchasing budget. In our first year of this pilot program, we reallocated $50,000. We managed 40 boosters funds for 14 schools. We added 50 volunteers, all of which led to 27 new programs, while saving the district As I said before, the directors at the nine major programs work for ABC, but we manage the budgets at 13 high schools. This partnership has allowed us not to only help school-based extracurriculars, but to develop district-wide programs. Got a lot of stuff going on up here. We're going to start with tennis. I believe Brenda Newberry's here tonight. Brenda would stand up, but she's on crutches. I don't think she did that playing tennis. She's our director of tennis, and she took a program that was at four schools and increased it to 21 schools this year. Quick Start Tennis is a program for elementary schools, kids using low nets, big rackets, Nerf balls, so young kids have more success more quickly. Now, we have a great quote up there from Bill Lofgren, former GCTA president, "And my mom taught me that I should be modest." But this isn't about me, this is about the staff at CPS and the staff at ABC. The ABC Tennis Initiative in elementary schools in the Cincinnati Public School District is the largest of its kind in our area, ever. Its partnership with the tennis community from the national level down to the grassroots is exactly how these programs should work. I commend ABC and all the frontline providers in CPS for all their time and effort. We're obviously very proud of the tennis program. Next comes arts enrichment. I think we have some artists with us tonight. I think they can stand up. We have Pam Shuner, Executive Director of Drama Kinetics, Marjorie Bledsoe, Drama Kinetics Art Instructor, Karen D'Agostino, Executive Director of the Music Resource Center, and Jamie Ferris, Arts Instructor at the Music Resource Center.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. What we did is, we started this as a pilot at Hughes last year, and it became, we brought it to four more schools that went 7th and 8th, adding to the 9th through 12th grade. And I'm not sure how to do this, so give me just a bunch, okay? We brought you a little presentation from the kids at Hughes. Thank you. That was a collaboration between the arts program and the STEM program at Hughes High School, and we're very, very happy with that. That's not the Romeo and Juliet I remember when I was a kid, but I like this one better. The next program is a martial, martial arts program with support from a general electric engineer and matching funds from the GE Foundation. We started a martial arts program, a pilot program for elementary school students at Hartwell and Mount Airy. And we've got a little quote here from Debbie Chambers, if you know her from Hartwell School, and she points out the pride, the respect, the discipline that these kids have learning through martial arts. Next on the hit list is soccer. Starting this spring, with the support of the Cincinnati Women's Club, we're bringing soccer to elementary school girls, 4th, 5th, and 6th grade girls in the district. So some things are just for the guys, Melanie, but some things are just for the girls. We recognize that also. Lisa Thal and Board Member Richard Friedman and I met with Leslie Maury of the Cincinnati Women's Club, and out of that meeting came this program. And two weeks ago, at a gala at the Women's Club, we received a check for $27,000 to fund this at approximately 25 schools. And that's the first day of soccer down at Riverview East this year. You can see their smiling faces. And then we, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention outdoor adventure clubs. Danny McFadden here? I used to say, Danny's the one with the fishing tackle and the lumberjack shirt and the wilderness outfit or stuff. Danny's a retired teacher from the Cincinnati Public School District. And under green umbrella with Brewster Rhodes, this was started three high schools. Mary, I think you directed them to those three high schools. And then this year, with the help of the Hale Foundation, Gear Up, Bob Cease, we expanded this to 11 schools, and so far, we've had a turnstile count of 3,000 kids taking inner-city kids out into the woods, hiking and biking and fishing and doing all kinds of stuff they normally wouldn't do. So we're very, very, very proud of this program. And there's a little quote there from Brewster about how he's so happy the green umbrellas and, and ABC came together doing it. And of course, baseball and softball. We work with the Cincinnati Reds Community Fund, managing upgraded facilities and creation of baseball and softball teams. And you're going to hear a whole lot more about that a little bit later. But here we have signing day at Hughes High School, there in Bowling, and he got a full ride to go to Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia. And we couldn't have done that without the Reds, and we're very appreciative. The next part is a little bit about nonprofit functions that we provide that don't particularly show, have any great pictures to show kids, but it's a business function that we help provide for entities in the district. Julie Henderson's here, Julie? Julie was a, was a teacher in the district for 30 years, and when she retired, they had a big party for her. And she asked people, please not to bring presents, but to bring a donation to ABC to help kids with special needs in the district. That turned into the Visiting Zoo. And we're appreciative to Julie, it was her initiative, we are glad to help her with that. And I asked her if she'd give us a quote, and she did. And I didn't know Julie before that, except we were down at Montgomery Inn, and we had a good old time, and she's, she's a fun lady, she's a serious lady, she's, she represents the district very, very, very well for all these many years. Next, you all know what Project Connect is. It's, we're the fiduciary agent for Project Connect, which is the program that helps kids that are homeless at some point during the year. And tonight, I am proud to announce that in addition to the consistent support that Project Connect receives from the Woodward Trust, ABC just received a $50,000 grant from the P&amp;G Foundation for summer programming for kids in Project Connect. We give, we have to give credit to Jackie Thomas for that, that was really a joint venture, and she did most of the work, so we're glad to help her. And then we just, we just had the CPS Hall of Fame, we just had the fifth one down at the Bengals, we couldn't have done without support from the Bengals. I know Chris was there, he's our official minister. He was there, I think Alex was there. We inducted 14 more inductees.
Mary, Mary was there.
Oh, yes, I sat at your table, Mary. Mary was there. CPS has a huge history of athletics that up until about five years ago was not recognized. Chris was one of the major founders of this. Western Hills High School alone has 14 alum who played or managed in Major League Baseball. And that's just one school. The first African-American to win a single gold medal at the Olympics comes from Al ton Hills Hubbard to Hart Hubbard. Before there was Jesse Owens, there was the Hart Hubbard, and the list goes on and on and on. So we're very, we're very proud of our support of the Athletic Hall of Fame. And there's some pictures up there. I think the one on the right is the current year, and the one on the left was the first year. And then the one up the top was last year at Withrow High School. And then coming up, and you all should have received an invitation about this, is the Outstanding Student-Athlete Recognition Banquet. Every year since we were founded, we've been really proud that we're the sponsor of the Outstanding Student Recognition Banquet. This also will be held down at the Bengal Stadium, and with their support. And let's see if I can make this work.
Miami Valley Conference, Malay Gulsten from Clark Montessori.
That's the game of life. You are the very best, the best of the best that the city of Cincinnati has to offer. From Aiken High School, Bisha Raghun.
Woo.
From Aiken High School, Bisha Murla.
Woo.
From Aiken High School, Shalel Melot.
BJ Lowery, come up here and stand with me. This is going to be hard, we do without Brian, so please bear with me. BJ is one of the most humble, respectful, and hardworking young men I've ever had the pleasure to be around. He truly leads by example in every single thing that he does. And I would like to read to you the plaque representing him tonight. And keep in mind, this is for his senior year only, senior year only. First Team C-MAC, All-League Football, C-MAC Defensive Player of the Year. First Team All-State, Division One Football. He is the first Hughes football player to be named First Team All-State. First Team C-MAC, All-League Basketball, we only named five individuals as that. First Team C-MAC, All-League Baseball, C-MAC Baseball Co-Player of the Year. And to top it off, track coaches asked him to run track this year, and he anchored the 4x400 meter relay team to a victory. So he was first Team All-League in four sports this year, and Player of the Year in two of those sports. He will also be playing football on a full ride for the University of Iowa next year. And hopefully, we'll get to see him play in the stadium someday, or I'll be back here to watch him play. So I'd like to congratulate BJ, and thank you for representing Hughes CPS Athletics
So don't miss it coming up, it's the first Monday after school is out in June. So how do we work? It's all about teamwork, it's all about partnership. I think I should mention our staff and our board at this time, because there's a lot of folks involved. I'm here, I don't know if Monica's still here, she's the brains in the organization. Robin couldn't be here. Of course, we have nine extracurricular athletic directors, our board, to whom I'm always grateful, and you've met many of the program directors here, you've met Pam, you've met Brenda. So we want to point out all the hard work that they do. And I've been here a couple times before, and it's always we talk about adults, or talking to other adults about kids. And I was really glad in the Moore presentation, you know, that you have a student here, because a lot of adults talk to a lot of adults a lot about kids. And I was trying to come up with a summary, and I thought what I'd do is I'd send an email out to all the ADs, and say, ask some kids what they think about the athletic program at the Cincinnati Public School District. So we got Andrew Crick, and I can guarantee you, he does a better job than I will ever do. He says that football's a lot like life. There are ups and downs, joys and disappointments. One thing that is common between the two, it does not matter if you get knocked down, it matters if you get back up. Football's taught me more life lessons than I ever imagined. It's taught me that I can be an effective leader, and that I love being a leader. It's taught me that I enjoy being a part of a team that works together toward a common goal. It has taught me that if I work at something hard enough, I can accomplish it. These are all skills that will be vital to my success in college. I will miss the blood, sweat, pain, and bruises when the football season is over, because they make me feel accomplished. The turf is where I'm truly happy. After this season, my time on the field will be over, but the lessons that I learned in football will stay with me throughout my life. On behalf of the staff and the board, and everybody here that's helped ABC and CPS and through our system, I'd like to thank you all for having us here tonight.
I know we don't have very many questions, but I would like the ABC program directors and, and also Lisa and anybody else representing ABC to stand up again, because we didn't have an opportunity to thank you with applause. So please stand up, and thank you for helping our kids and guiding our kids. Any questions or comments? I think we're in good shape. I do think there's this.
Yeah, well, let me say this. First of all, Brian, I want to thank you. A lot of times, we constantly looking for perfection in the things that we do, and there's nothing perfect but God. But I also want to say to you, in addition to the Hall of Fame induction ceremony, when I had the idea and I came to you, and we collaborated with Mr. Miles and Dave Durkin and Mr. Bryan, it was an idea that was birthed from a collection of people where we could, I had opportunity to celebrate those that labored and tarred and represented this community, but never had their day in the sun. And ABC, formerly Student Activity Foundation, you stepped up, you've always been receptive to anything out the box. You also, with the Student-Athlete Banquet, honored the athletes, but I don't think people in the listening audience know that for years, you ran with a concept that was birthed, when I was the AD at Hughes, it was the Martin Luther King Holiday Basketball Classic. And it ran on for years, and not only did it honor a man who laid his life down for justice, but it also gave the kids in our community the opportunity to... justice, but it also gave the kids in our community the opportunity to come and celebrate unity. My question would be, I know, but how has this partnership enhanced ABC's effort on behalf of the students at CPS? And what do you plan to do next year? You've already done a lot, uh, more than we could ever imagine. We've had the conversation about a foundation, because Cincinnati Public School can't do it all. But if God gives you a vision, He'll provide the provision for you to support the vision that He gives you. And I know that without a doubt, because it's manifested over and over and over with the people in the audience. If we can learn how to get out of the way and service the kids that we say we all have a commitment to, because I don't think it's the kids, I think it's the adults that most often bring the confusion that keeps us from serving the kids.
Well, there's no question about that. And you and I have talked a great deal. I always say that Chris is the, is the minister to activities beyond the classroom, and that's sort of funny, because I'm Jewish, but we get along on that pretty well. Um, what we're going to do next year, uh, first thing we're going to do is we're going to help the Withrow Bridge this year. We're providing tennis and outdoor adventure for Withrow Bridge. Uh, those requested by Paul Daniels, and we're glad to step up and help him with that. Some of these programs, you just saw our pilot program. So the soccer just got started, so we want to expand that next year. Tennis, we actually have a three-year plan. We're in 21 schools. We'd like to be in 45 elementary schools before this is all done. Martial arts, I just spoke with Mohammed Edashami, who's been announced as the new head of all-new engine research at General Electric. He's strongly behind the martial arts program, so we'd like to be able to expand that. So there's a lot of expansion we do. We've got a lot of things started. The other thing is, to a certain degree, we're opportunistic. When people come to us, and just think about what you just said, when Dr. Brian, Dave Durker, and Bill Miles, and Chris Elms came to us and said, let's do a Hall of Fame, that wasn't my idea, that was your idea. But if we can be the vessel for that, we jump on that opportunity, and we're glad to do that. So a lot of these things that happen, I wish I could say I was this really smart guy. I sit in this room, I come up with all these ideas, and they all happen. And that just isn't so. It's a whole lot of people within CPS, outside of CPS, who come together and say, can we do this? Uh, we're working on a little bit. We're proud to announce we put the, I think, the last $2,000 in the new Taipei City. I don't know if you know that, Mary. We're, whatever you say. You're welcome. Um, I think that was brought to us by the mayor. Um, yeah, anyway. So, uh, what we do is, is sort of opportunistic. We, when, when people come up with good ideas, we try to put the right people together. Uh, one of the things that really helps is this partnership. I like to say this is about ABC, but it's really about CPS and ABC. Lots of people feel more comfortable writing a check to a 501(c)(3). Some foundations will only write a check to a 501(c)(3). Uh, we just did a thing with the ODE with, um, Julie Doppler. The, uh, the scoring rubric actually rewards partnerships between government entities and nonprofits. That gets you more points than just being a nonprofit or just being a government entity. So it's this partnership that's just been very, very, very powerful.
Well, I want to, again, publicly thank you, because right after this year's Hall of Fame induction ceremony, I had the same idea for TAF. TAF had been rebuilt, and so they lost a lot of history. So we had a Hall of Fame induction program. The very next day, we re-inducted and inducted 21 athletes, at least four of them was re-inducted, or inducted the previous night. But the point is, I came to you, because when we formed the committee, we had no money, but we had a vision. So when I called you, you was willing to support us. However, we sold enough tickets, we paid off all our expenses, and now we're going to provide two scholarships for, uh, two student athletes, male and female, at TAF this year. So I just want to say again, thank you for just being there.
Chris, thank you.
Brian, be, be, before you go, one of the things I would like to emphasize is, you've, you know, you're involved with the arts and other activities as well as athletics. And indeed, the thing that's very exciting to me right now is you're bringing some of these sports that traditionally are not sports for urban children, let alone the children that we have, who indeed have many other kind of financial challenges as well. I'm loving the fact that you're bringing soccer to girls' elementary age into our, uh, our district. And, and very frankly, as everybody knows me about birding and a few other things, I am thrilled to think that there were 3,000 kids that somehow got in the outdoors and experienced the great effort that, uh, whatever is the power that be has allowed to be on this earth, because I will tell you, that is a remarkable thing when you know that urban kids, and thank you Superintendent for suggesting some of those schools, but the reality is, for them to be out in the outdoors, whether it's rafting, or canoeing, or hiking, or whatever, I just think that that's such a positive force. So all of this is great, and keep up the good work. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. And if you'll allow me to do one last thing, instead of you introducing...
I don't get to introduce him?
Sure.
No, go ahead. Please do. We have a special guest tonight.
We're, we're, the PowerPoint is off, but if you would allow me, ma'am, since I work for him too.
Go ahead. I had a great introduction, so if this isn't good enough, I'll do it afterward.
I, I'd like to introduce my friend, um, a board member of ABC, a Walnut Hills High School CPS alum, and the executive director of the Cincinnati Reds Community Fund, Charlie Frank.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you to each and every one of you for allowing me to be a part of tonight's activities. Um, it's great to hear so much of what's going on inside the district, and, uh, it's really been very exciting also to be a part of Brian's efforts with the ABC Foundation. I love the way it all fits together. As Brian mentioned, I'm a Walnut Hills alum, many family members, and hopefully future family members also, uh, at Walnut Hills. Want to tell you a little bit about the Reds Community Fund. We're, uh, we've been around since 2001, and, uh, there's still plenty of Reds fans that, that have heard about us and certainly know the great work that the Castellini ownership team has done in the community, uh, but may not know exactly what it is we do. And really, what it is, is very simple. Uh, we have six, uh, baseball and softball themed programs. Uh, they all have a higher quality to them. Some are about education, some are about, uh, social and cultural interaction, some are about community service, but they all use baseball and softball as a hook, uh, to get urban boys and girls engaged in something positive. In this case, we're trying to leverage, uh, the nearly 150-year history of the Cincinnati Reds, uh, the original professional baseball team, and one of the oldest teams in all of professional sports. Uh, so we do that through our Reds Rookie Success League program. Uh, we do it through our youth baseball funding initiative, which now reaches close to 750 teams, uh, all throughout the region, that all they have to do to receive funding is to complete three community service projects. Uh, it involves RBI, which is Major League Baseball's Reviving Baseball in Inner Cities, uh, which now has become more of a select urban baseball and softball program that focuses primarily on CPS student athletes. Uh, field renovation, which we partnered with the district and Cincinnati Recreation Commission, among many other partners, uh, touching more than 350 fields since three, uh, since 2006. Uh, it involves a program called The Match, which, uh, brings urban and suburban teams together, uh, and it blends them. I had the privilege of attending one in Madisonville yesterday between the Madisonville Braves and Anderson Township Little League. They, they all play together as opposed to against one another, and they break bread afterwards. And I've had a coach, a chance to coach in that program with, with my son and daughter as well, and it's really a thrill. And then at the bottom of the list over there, you hear, you see the P&amp;G Cincinnati MLB Urban Youth Academy, which is, uh, the biggest thing that we've done in our decade-plus, and, uh, a big push now for Major League Baseball all throughout the United States. It was really led by Joe Morgan, uh, trying to develop more urban athletes. Major League Baseball and industry has spent billions of dollars, uh, developing, uh, baseball, uh, talent throughout the, throughout the world, really in the Hispanic countries, in the Far East, and, um, and now we're trying to do that more and more in the U.S. So I'll talk about that a little bit here towards the end. But what I want to focus on tonight is the unique nature of the relationship between CPS and the Reds and the Reds Community Fund. Uh, and not only Brian and Lisa from a leadership standpoint, but also I'd be remiss, uh, not to applaud Dave Durker, the longtime athletic director with the district, who fortunately for the Reds, uh, I think at his core is a great baseball guy, longtime coach, and, and a great baseball advocate. And he's been a tremendous volunteer for us as well, and a leader. And working with Dave, and Lisa, and Brian, and others in the district, we were able to formally announce a partnership at Reds Fest in December of 2008. You can see a couple of those images. When we took a lot of the work that we had been doing at that time, and we said, well, let's make it formal. Let's, let's really try to put some, um, some parameters on what it is we're doing and, and set some goals. And that year, we committed to spend a minimum of $50,000 a year towards CPS programs. Uh, so what that meant beginning, uh, that season was that we were going to provide a $1,500 stipend to any, uh, boys varsity baseball program, and then that has grown since, uh, to include a junior varsity program as well as a girls' fast pitch softball program. And it also entails a tremendous amount of support to the ballfields used by CPS athletes, because as we all know, if you don't have a safe, uplifting, uh, place to play, then baseballs and softball are both going to struggle. So we, we've put some dollars towards programs worth CPS and CRC that have benefited many of CPS's, uh, baseball and softball teams. You can see the schools there that have benefited. Uh, I mentioned baseball began then in 2009, and that list has changed as some schools have blinked on and off, but basically, it's been anywhere from nine to 11 schools that have hosted, uh, varsity baseball. And then beginning last year in 2013, we began a similar initiative, providing, uh, some funding for softball programs, well over $100,000 since, uh, 2009 towards this initiative, uh, which has no endpoint for us, and hopefully only growth in the future with additional teams, uh, and additional dollars being available. Similarly, we began investing in area ballfields. And over at the old Jacobs Center, which was Cape at the time in 2009, we worked with some of the leaders, uh, at the school, and we took what had been a forgotten ballfield at the complex, and with some dollars invested by Brandon Phillips, when he had a contract extension, uh, we rebuilt, uh, the primary baseball field at Jacobs into Brandon Phillips' Field, which is still one of our most heavily utilized fields, still the home of Clark Montessori even after they moved back to Hyde Park, uh, and really one of the big urban draws for even suburban teams. Everyone wants to come and play at Brandon Phillips' Field. Uh, we also, uh, just up the hill from there on the corner of Winton and Dutch Colony, uh, we turned a forgotten field into a championship softball field, which is now, uh, the home field for Walnut Hills. Uh, we've worked at Withrow High School with plans, hopefully, to do even more, uh, for the varsity baseball field behind Withrow. Uh, we've been working at Dyer Field on Bank Street, uh, in the West End over the Ryan Area, which is TAF's home field, and continue to invest dollars there, as well as over at Evans Field, uh, which is, uh, uh, over in the Lower Price Hill area, where TAF has also played, uh, working with CPS and CRC. Uh, and then the Urban Youth Academy in Roseland, which I'll touch on in just a minute. That image at the bottom there was just this past Saturday. We also, uh, sponsor a field maintenance clinic, uh, for anyone, including CPS, uh, field folks, coaches, athletic directors. Uh, Brian has been there in the past, and we bring the Reds head groundskeeper out there to help schools and districts better understand how to better maintain their ballfields. Now, during the offseason, uh, our Urban Academy, you see, that is the old Blue Gym at, at Cape or Jacobs, um, and that's something that the district allowed the Reds, uh, to inherit, uh, use of in the fall of 2009. So we just completed our fifth fall and winter of providing free training, uh, both in terms of baseball and softball, but also an educational component with the University of Cincinnati. And you can see the number of CPS schools, uh, that have used it both for baseball and softball. Traditionally, the, uh, academy has been open six days and nights a week. We're closed on Friday because of high school athletics, but we're open with, uh, individual training on Mondays and Thursdays, with boys' baseball on Tuesdays, and girls' softball on Wednesdays, uh, with really a terrific program. And Marlon Stiles, who hopefully many of you know, a great baseball name in this community, a part-time Red Scout, a proud Ekin Falcon, right, Chris? Uh, Marlon, uh, who was with us at one of our tournaments over the weekend, uh, pulled us aside and excitedly was telling us, uh, the improvement of many of these teams that have been using, uh, the facilities here over the last five years. And, uh, Brian mentioned Darren Bowling, one of our prized pupils. We hate the fact that Darren gave up basketball when he was a two sport, as two sports star at Hughes, but we love the fact that he worked with our crew to focus on baseball, which led to great improvement. He threw a no-hitter during his senior year in 2013, became the first, uh, baseball player at Hughes, and Jillinda said, more than a decade, to sign a letter of intent, uh, for a scholarship, and he is now at Morehouse College in Atlanta. Uh, is a red, got a redshirt year this year, but doing great down in Atlanta. We're very, very proud of our association, not only with Darren, but also with Jillinda Miller, who is a gem, as many of you know. Um, our girls' fast pitch softball program probably growing, uh, as quickly and meaningfully as anything that we do. Uh, our leadership is tremendous, uh, largely because of the CPS influence that we have. Uh, volunteer coaches from Walnut Hills, from TAF, from Woodward, from West High, uh, tremendous leadership that we have with this program. Many of these young women, uh, over the last five or six years, have matriculated to our RBI program. Uh, they've represented Major League Baseball and our community and the Reds with tremendous class. They've also advanced to the RBI Regional Finals in each of the last three years. Uh, so we look forward to more great things from our CPS, uh, student athletes and our RBI girls. So, uh, when Brian asked me to be here tonight, and when I spoke with Chris a little bit about it in advance, we thought that really one of the most important elements, uh, to speak of was the investment that's going on right now in the Roseland community. And for many of you that, that aren't familiar, uh, this is Roseland Park. Uh, you can see it's off Seymour Avenue, uh, not just down the street from Woodward, and right in the, uh, upper right is the Amice School, the K-8, the beautiful new school there on Hirsch, uh, which we are now next-door neighbors to. Uh, but this had been a four-field complex for a long time, um, that dating back to the late 1990s, when CRC had the vision to turn a multi-rec site into a true urban baseball and softball hub. Um, when we began offering free fall and winter programming, Major League Baseball showed up in 2009, and they wanted to get involved, and Joe Morgan wanted to make sure that they got involved in a significant fashion, so we thanked Joe for his leadership. But the, uh, the elements here now, uh, include a 35,000-square-foot indoor training center, which will be completed, uh, more than a year ahead of schedule this July, uh, a stadium field, which had been the Purcell Field, uh, let me see if I can get this pointer to work. There we go. So here had been the Purcell Marion Field, which is now our stadium field. This had been the Walnut Hills Field. Uh, it is now our secondary stadium field. This had been a little league field, which we converted with help from the City of Cincinnati into a full-size field. They moved their shelter, which had been located there, now closer to Seymour. They moved their basketball courts, also closer to Seymour, uh, and they moved their playground, which had been back towards the ballfields, closer to the street. So we now have really a great baseball and softball facility. This is a completely rebuilt championship softball field. Uh, this field also includes a synthetic infield, which makes it a much more desirable tournament space. And here's our indoor academy, where we have three classrooms, a fitness space, indoor batting cages and tunnels, a 120-by-120 ballfield, and other multifunction space that our staff will move into on a full-time basis this July. So the Reds aren't just out there to be a small part of it. We're out there to be a full-time part of the community, uh, for the entire year, and to bring in as many CPS students as we can to help them develop not only baseball and softball skills, but also support their education. This past weekend was really the first time our, uh, facility minus the indoor, uh, element was in full swing. Uh, we had a CPS-sponsored tournament over the weekend. Uh, we had the Skyline Chili, uh, Reds Futures High School Showcase, which in its third year had 72 local teams this spring, really a remarkable accomplishment by Tom Gamble and In Game Sports. And you can see that we had seven CPS, uh, schools that participated at the facility over the weekend. And they all performed, uh, fabulously, represented themselves, uh, with great class, and it was so exciting to see so many of the CPS schools at a new facility, which we hope, uh, will house many of their events for years and years to come. So in the future, uh, and a little bit about the past, this year, more than 5,500 kids came through, uh, this free academy. We always felt that Winton Terrace wasn't the easiest place to get to, um, but thanks to the district, we were able to communicate, uh, consistently with athletic directors, principals, administrators, leaders, and this year, 5,500 more than doubled our previous high. So we're thrilled, uh, with the, the turnout so far, and we think with the move to the new facility, we're only going to have more traction. Um, beginning this fall, when we move into the new building here, as you see, uh, the rendering, uh, not only will we have mentoring and tutoring that UC has provided two nights a week, but we're going to increase that to four nights a week with study tables. We've begun to introduce college tests preparation, uh, financial aid preparation for parents and families. Uh, we're working with other organizations such as Dress for Success, uh, UC Health, Mercy Health, Children's Hospital, uh, Gateway, Cincinnati State, many, many others, on a job readiness program and vocational programs, and field trips that will hopefully make the building not only accessible after school hours, but will also provide leadership training during that 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. window, as we get into this facility in this, uh, in this fall and winter season. Uh, for anyone looking for more information, I have the reds.com/community web address. Uh, we're also looking always for volunteers for our programs, uh, for those high schools that have volunteer, uh, service requirements. have volunteer service requirements, or for those that are like Walnut Hills that are using the facility as a primary tenant, we're hoping to get them more engaged in our programs. But I want to thank again all of CPS. I want to thank the ABC Foundation for its leadership and engagement. I certainly want to thank Vice President Nelmes. A lot of what we do, literally, is taking the baton from the great work that he's done in the community for decades. The programs that we run now are difficult enough when we are literally under the umbrella, part of the Reds organization, and very few days go by that we don't marvel at the work that Chris did when he was an independent, you know, pushing that boulder up the hill to get RBI off the ground in Cincinnati and to really use baseball and softball as a life lesson for urban boys and girls. So, thank you all very much. If you have any questions, I'd be thrilled to answer, and I invite you all to come out and see our new complex in Roseland.
Thank you very much. Not only for your presentation, but thank you for the partnership that is focused on our kids, our students, our athletes. And Chris mentioned that the complex that you're building, I believe in Roseland, as you said, there's how many of those in the country?
Four or five. Yeah, we're just the fourth, but we're the first northern climate. So, Joe Morgan urged the league and the commissioner to invest in this Urban Youth Academy model. It opened in Los Angeles in 2006. It took them four years to open their next one in Houston, and since then, they've also opened in New Orleans. So, we're the third major league city, we're the first northern-climate city. You see Procter &amp; Gamble logos, Major League Baseball logos, CRC, CPS. It clearly has taken everyone. It's been more than $7 million raised. This never could have been done without Bob and Phil Castellini knocking on doors, making this a priority, leveraging Reds players, leveraging Reds sponsors, leveraging Reds shareholders and owners. You know, from a community fund standpoint, we've held on for dear life because the leadership, literally, is coming from the top down. And for those of you, you know, that follow, the Castellinis are, you know, as terrific an ownership team I think as this franchise has had in a long time. I think we're very lucky in the community to have them. This would not have happened without Bob and Phil and without all those other partners.
Well, I'm very pleased to see the CPS logo up there close to Major League Baseball and P&amp;G, and we are a very fortunate school district to have this kind of support. Any comments or questions from anybody? We so appreciate it, and frankly, as some of you know, anything about baseball, Reds baseball, and I even know President Sellers of the Teachers Union, she's probably ready to talk pretty soon, has lost some of her constituency out here for the presentations. However, she is the person that did suggest recently that the school calendar be built around opening day. So, I know that she won't be too upset that she had to wait a little bit longer, but I can't thank you enough for bringing baseball to urban students, urban families, and urban neighborhoods.
And Charlie, I want to say thank you too, because like Brian, you've always been receptive to anything that benefits the kids and the community. And I've just been blessed to be a conduit as a part of all of that, and I just thank God for it. But I also want to say, man, you had a conversation today. About three years ago, we did a celebrity softball game, and Superintendent Ronan was there. I don't think Melanie was there, but I think you was there, and it was a big hit. And the day in our conversation, you brought up the idea that one of the original RBI players that we took to Detroit. Now, he was 14-years-old and hit a home run in Tiger Stadium, and Cincinnati RBI was the last team to play in Tiger Stadium before they tore it down. And so, we kind of toyed with the idea about having a RBI reunion for the kids, and then we're going to probably talk about how we can mesh that with a celebrity softball game involving CPS, the community, RBI, the Reds, and so it's all about partnership. That's all it's about.
Play ball.
Play ball.
Well, with the new facility, August 22nd and 23rd will be our grand opening, so a lot of the celebrity games will be on that Saturday, the 23rd, right before or right as the next school year is beginning. So, Vice President Nelmes will be thrilled to work with you on that idea.
Yes, sir. We'll talk about it, you and your staff.
Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate it. And Mrs. Bates, I know that you have both kudos and also announcements regarding retirements tonight.
Yes, I'll start with the retirements, and I want to acknowledge our staff members who will be retiring very soon. There are Victoria Butler, Jean Carrier, Patricia Crawford, Gloria Jones, Karen Peck, and Kathy Stangetti, and we really appreciate your service to the district and wish you well. I also have a kudo here. It is for Winton Hills Academy's sixth-grade student, Malik Lee Herring, for being chief for a day. Cincinnati Police Chief Jeffrey Blackwell sworn Malik Lee Herring as police chief for the day during his staff meeting on Tuesday, April 8th, 2014. Malik attended the chief's staff meeting in District One, was introduced to the police district's bomb dog, Duke, was taken on a tour, and participated in a host of other police chief events. Malik was chosen based on his leadership skills and doing good work. The goal of Police Chief Blackwell's Chief of the Day program is to build up the engagement piece with youth, the urban community and youth, and police relationships.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. And now, we move on to the part of our meeting regarding hearing the public, and we have several speakers tonight, I guess four. First speaker is Nina Caparale, who is speaking on behalf regarding the developments in Avondale, so Friends of Avondale 29. And she'll speak, and then after that, after her, we have Doug Sizemore, Brad Smith, and Julie Sellers. And that will take care of it.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Nina Caparale, and I have been working with the Avondale 29 Group, the Friends of Avondale 29, and the North Avondale Neighborhood Association. I am also founder of a Facebook page called Growing Friendly Neighborhoods. Speaking on behalf of these groups, we would like to recognize the hard work and dedication of Julie Sellers and Melanie Bates. We are grateful for their diligence, engagement with the community, and their concern for the safety of our schoolchildren. We are here tonight to demonstrate our support for the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers because their concerns for area schoolchildren are also our concerns. We are also very grateful to Mayor Cranley for the efforts he is making to transform our city into a more inclusive and welcoming place to live, and for sharing a sympathetic ear with us to hear our concerns about the future of Avondale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Juliette, President Sellers, I didn't know how you wanted to organize the speeches, but I think Brad, Smith, and Doug Sizemore, and you, in however order you want to proceed.
Good evening, Superintendent Ronan, Treasurer Witt, and members of the board. I am sorry to everyone here that we were put at the end of the agenda because they all have to get home and get their work done for school tomorrow, so a lot of people were not able to stay. We thought that we would be able to speak right at the beginning of the, normally, of the meeting. As you know, we cannot discuss the details of negotiations, but I do just want to talk about the importance of completing the negotiation process this week so that we can ratify the language prior to the end of this school year. You may ask why this timeline is so important. If we do not complete the process during May, it will be delayed until next school year, causing a year's delay in any implementation. And as you know, negotiations are the easy part, and implementation is when the real work takes place. We must be able to begin planning as soon as possible. The CFT team agrees that both teams have worked tremendously hard to be able to come up with language that both sides would be able to ratify. It has not been easy, and at times, it was downright frustrating, and I know that everyone is tired after this process. We have met together for at least 75 hours together in the negotiation room since, just since February, and at least that many hours with each of our respective teams. Our final concern with negotiations is that we will be able to come to agreement and build transparency regarding the district's fiscal solvency, which will allow teachers to be able to return to a competitive salary. I want to talk about how we are in our competitive salary for the county of Hamilton County. As CFT continues to monitor the district's budget, we have done an analysis of the public schools districts in Hamilton County. This sample of salaries confirm exactly what every employee in this district has felt in their own pockets. Our salaries have remained stagnant for six years as the cost of living in Ohio has increased by 24%. Everybody is taking home less money today than they did six years ago. What I have noticed, though, is that CPS does not value experience or training for their employees. Our career earnings are also in the bottom half for Hamilton County. CPS is ranked 12th out of 17 for a teacher with their masters. This impacts our teachers for their entire lives as they enter into retirement. Our top master's teacher at the top salary is $18,000, almost $19,000 less than other area districts in Hamilton County on a per-year basis. That's a huge difference when those teachers go to retirement. Our teachers are dedicated, and they put the lives of their students many times before their own children. And these teachers are giving much more in the classroom out of their pocket every single day also. I believe that the teachers in CPS work harder than any other district in this county because they are working with the children of the greatest needs in Hamilton County. And as you all know, poverty in Hamilton County has increased tremendously just in the last five years, so they are doing more with less on a daily basis. CFT has requested to meet with the board, and we have not had a response, but I do want the board to know that we are still open to meeting. We feel confident with the board's commitment to remain collaborative and transparent with CFT, and it is important that we maintain our collaborative processes because we all know that those closest to the educational process must have a voice in the education, policy, and practice, not in this district, but nationally. We would like to emphasize the importance of reclaiming the promise of public education in Cincinnati, which includes a very fair and reliable process for teacher evaluation. The CFT team would like to thank every parent, teacher, and community member who came out this evening to support the teachers of Cincinnati Public Schools so that we can get a fair contract that promotes strong learning conditions, which includes a strong competitive compensation package that is, that we are able to recruit and retain the very best teachers in our region. And without that, we will just become the training grounds for the suburban districts. We would also like to thank all of the schools and departments who volunteered to provide snacks and food throughout this process. We were in the rooms for eight, 10, 12 hours at a time, where we did not stop to go out to eat. We worked nonstop from morning till night. The schools that we would like to thank are Midway, Gamble, Carson, Walnut, Parker Woods, Montessori, CFT's executive council, Audrey, the 504 coordinator for her delicious brownies, the psychologists, the instructional coaches, Silverton, South Avondale, the CFT office, and the CFOP. We would also like to thank all of the area coordinators, and last but not least, this weekend, senior management provided lunch for us. We hope that by the next meeting, we will be here ratifying a fair contract for the employees in CPS. And I just want to leave you with one final thought. Treat employees like they make a difference, and they will. Thank you.
The only person I know that doesn't have the timer started when she gets to speak, and that's, I don't even think that's afforded to board members. So, thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it, and thank you for your leadership. And next one, well, okay, we have Brad Smith.
Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, Treasurer and Superintendent. I want to speak to you tonight about one of the key things that has made this district not only the highest-performing district in the state of Ohio, but in the top 10 urban districts in all of the United States, and that is simply collaboration. Cincinnati Federation of Teachers and the Board of Education have worked through the years to create collaborative structures throughout our district that give the key stakeholders in our district a voice and a seat at the table. And so, in our buildings, we have an instructional leadership team that assesses the needs of its student population, that plans an instructional plan, as well as aligning the services to help it and help its student body to succeed. We have an LSDMC that gives all of the stakeholders in the community a chance to come in and create a big, successful community school in every neighborhood in the city of Cincinnati. We have district-wide things, like the education initiative panels, bringing teachers and administrators together to continue to work on improving the structural outcomes in this district. We have a school performance team that brings teachers and administrators together to basically look at our high-need schools and try to help improve them. We have a budget commission that brings district teachers, community stakeholders together to build transparency, to build accountability into the budgeting process. No successful organization does it without a collaborative environment. No successful educational change is going to happen without these people standing back here. If we do not include them in the process, and we do not give them a seat at the table and a voice, we will not succeed in continuing to make this district better. So, I want to encourage you to continue to build upon this atmosphere and environment of collaboration that we have built over the many, many years in this district. And as we continue to move forward, to continue to include all of the voices to make this district successful, and again, do not forget all of these hard-working people who decided to come out, even though they got to get up tomorrow and do it all over again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we're very honored to have Mr. Doug Sizemore from the Cincinnati AFL-CIO.
Hey, Doug.
Good to see you, Mr. Sizemore.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Doug Sizemore. I'm Executive Secretary/Treasurer of the Cincinnati AFL-CIO Labor Council. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak before you this evening. I'm here speaking on behalf of the members of the over 100 local unions that make up our labor council, and I stand before you in a united voice with our sisters and brothers that work hard every day to make sure that the children of Cincinnati get the best education possible, work hard to make sure that CPS continues to be ranked the number-one urban school district in Ohio, work hard and continue to play a major role in making sure that the community learning centers can continue to be a great success, as we all know that they are by the national recognition they have received. And I can tell you, I travel throughout the country, and Cincinnati gets recognition all around the country. all around the country for what the teachers and CPS School District are doing with the community learning centers. From my peers at different labor councils, they've approached me about what's going on here. And I want to personally thank the teachers for all you've done to make us really proud here about the community learning centers and all you've done to make us proud of this school district. So I guess with that, I'll just close by urging the board and the administration to show the employees of CPS the respect that they so rightly deserve by negotiating a fair and equitable contract with them in the negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sizemore. Thank you, Doug. We appreciate your comments and everyone's attendance tonight. I did go out to try to see if we could get the house lights on so that we could see some of the signs, so somehow that's not a possibility or it's channeled somehow differently. So feel free, if, as you are exiting or whenever you want to exit, to, if you go there, over by the door, and make sure to show your signs as you go out so we can perhaps read them. Maybe you can see those. All right. This is not the end of our meeting. We now go on to the business part of our meeting. I appreciate your attendance, and we will move on with Mr. Nelmes. Would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Well, I do have a resolution, Madam President, and, uh, board colleagues, a resolution recommending amendments to the Ohio School Boards Association 2014 Legislative Platform, and it's pretty much where as the OSBA promotes and supports reform that provides for a system of public schools that is accountable to the communities that they serve and prepares students to be productive citizens in a competitive and global society, and I submit as written. And most of you have a copy.
Thank you. Is there a second to the resolution?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. Is there any discussion about the resolution regarding amending the School Boards Association Legislative Platform? It's worked its way through committees?
Yeah, I just had one other thing to add that I think got, maybe got missed here to see if folks agree with. There was one other thing, I don't remember which committee I had brought it up in. On page three, when it says, "OSBA opposes legislation that," I'm wondering if we can add a bullet there that says opposes legislation that doesn't have additional funding associated with it? We seem to get a lot of legislation from the state that doesn't actually give us any more funding.
Unfunded mandates.
Right. So if we could add that?
Would you accept a friendly amendment to that?
Yes, I will. What bullet was that?
So it's on page three. There are two, on page three of our actual little packet we got. It says, "OSB opposes legislation that," and there are two subbullets now. So if we could add one that says, "opposes legislation that doesn't have additional funding associated with it."
Okay.
Did the treasurer, did the treasurer get that friendly amendment? And does the seconder get to say it's okay?
That's fine.
So we have the motion and the second agreeing to that friendly amendment. Thank you. Good catch.
Thanks, please.
And we're good with that? Then if there's any, no other discussion, then we're going to move on and have a roll call vote for the revised resolution as presented by Mr. Nelmes and with the friendly amendment from Member Hoffman.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelmes?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye, thank you very much. Superintendent Ronan, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. President Bolton, I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work that's been taking place in our elementary schools because our students are entering the home stretch towards the Ohio Achievement Test, which starts the week of May 5th. Many of our schools have been offering Super Saturdays tutoring sessions where they give additional support to our youngsters. So I would like to publicly thank the principals, the teachers, and all the volunteers who have been made, who have actually made that possible. And speaking of Saturday, this Saturday, we had our Summer Stars pep rally about our third-grade guarantee, and it was right here in this auditorium. We had the mascots Will Reed and Tori Teller here. We had parents. It was a lot of fun, which was the message we were trying to get across, that it would be fun if you come. Kathy Wade was here, and she presented her Books-A-Live presentation, and it was really a very, very nice afternoon. And so we think we're going to be, we have a pretty successful plan, and this was a great first effort to get parents in the community involved. And finally, I would like to share a, really a spotlight on a partner. There is a collaboration between Cincinnati Public Schools and the Smithsonian Institute, and it's really through our friends at GE Aviation. So it's for fifth graders at Evanston. It was reported in the media. I got to see it. The fifth graders were actually talking with a scientist at the Smithsonian who had the Martian rover behind her, and then the youngsters had built an actual little robot themselves, saw how difficult it was to program just to go around their classroom. So, you know, the scientist at the Smithsonian said, "Imagine trying to program it when it's on Mars and it's stuck in some crater, and it takes a month to figure out how you're going to back it out after it's gotten stuck." So it was an amazing experience, was featured on the news, and we have a clip I'd like to show.
Cool.
Wasn't that great? So, and we're looking at expanding the program next year. Thank you.
I would only add that I think that that, part of that was in the same week that the Community Learning Center folks were here, and the federal guy was here to see Schroeder and more. I mean...
It was a busy week.
It was a very busy week, and people were coming here and paying attention to us, and that was, and caring about our kids. So that was great. Before we move on, maybe you would do the Walnut Hills piece, because then the superintendent will be able to kind of fill in some of the gaps of that. But we did miss it in our kudos, and you're right to point it out.
Yeah, so some good news. The U.S. News &amp; World Report, annual report of the country's best high schools, Walnut Hills literally couldn't do better in the state of Ohio. They are the number-one high school in the state of Ohio. So we think that deserves some applause for all of the folks who are there, the staff, the kids, the families who support the, all of our students at Walnut Hills. And I know there's lots of folks who work with all of our other high schools who are also working tirelessly and won't be satisfied till all of our high schools make that list. But we want to congratulate Walnut Hills for a huge accomplishment.
Well, we both...
There you go.
All right. Okay, you're right. Go for it. Walnut Hills, I love it. That's great. It's fabulous. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
No move.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. Do I have a second? Do you have a second? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelmes?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. Do we have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions or points that we want to point out in the treasurer's report, particularly? Would like the treasurer and maybe the superintendent to speak if they would regarding, I think, again, it was a while back, but I believe that there are coupled, the agreement with New Teacher Project is that in this treasurer's report. I've, it's been a while since I first...
Number four.
Thank you. Item four on the, um, page one. Perhaps you could discuss what that may mean?
Yes, the New Teacher Project is coming to work with our HR department to really improve talent recruitment and talent development. Look at our processes. For instance, we had this, we had the job fair with 600 teachers came, gave us their resume, but what kind of process do we have to go through the 600 resumes? Are we just, and in addition, is just looking at grade point average and whatever's on a resume? How do we really look at the data and hire the very best and brightest teachers? So we're very excited with the approval tonight. The New Teacher Project said they can have someone here tomorrow to work with our Director of HR, and I know that Pat Neil Miller has actually had, I think, one or two phone conferences already with the New Teacher Project staff so that they can hit the ground running when they come here.
Very much, Mrs. Hoffman.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my excitement about this. You know, I think we all know that the biggest in-school factor that contributes to our students' growth is our teachers. And so we can do everything else under the sun, but if we don't get this piece right, it actually is not going to have the impact we want on our kids. And with the changes in Ohio State retirement laws, we know this is the time that we're going to see some huge retirements over the next couple of years. And so this support is really exciting for us to figure out how to identify those teachers who are going to make the biggest impact on our students. And so we're really, really excited about this.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, I'd also like to echo just how excited I am about the New Teacher Project. We received several presentations, and then just in research, we understand the great work that they've done across the country. And so our administrators, like Pat Neil Miller, who's been very supportive and just, you know, learning the ropes related to New Teacher Project, welcoming them in, and the same with the superintendent, I'm very excited to see them here. And I might even ask that we continue to give updates as we go along...
That'd be great.
During board meetings.
The questions or comments on the treasurer's report, then we will move on and have roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelmes?
You.
President Bolton?
Aye, thank you. And now, after we've had the treasurer's report and superintendent's recommendations, we move on, if we could, to any of the inquiries or updates. And I believe the only one that's cited is the one that's talking about the Pinnacle Award. And does anybody have any particular comment to that? I think it's moving its way through PPE, perhaps?
Yes, President Bolton, we did discuss the Pinnacle Award in our PPE meeting, and I believe, Mr. Manera can help me out with this, but I think we're supposed to come back with some recommendations at our next, at our next meeting.
I think that's correct. I think Chairman Coons has asked us for some nominations, and probably if PPE will kind of send a descriptor around as to what the Pinnacle Award is. I know last year's winner was Mr. Jim Berry, sometimes described as the eighth member of the school board.
Yes.
So that he's set a strong, good standard for us, and, but I think a descriptor would be helpful in the board packet.
That would be great. I'll ask Member Coons to get that to do it.
Thank you. All right. And now, are there any assignments? No assignments? We are adjourned.